Okay, last time I get to use this gavel. So I'm gonna use it. Okay, everyone, welcome. Can we stand for the pledge? Senator Howell, will you lead us?
Absolutely.
There's no flag. Let's just print our minds.
There is a flag. It's visible in your mind.
There you go.
Please, please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Vicki, would you do the roll, please?
Senator Berman.
President.
Senator Howell.
Here.
Chair Polsky.
Here.
Senator Powell, he's excused. Senator Caruso.
Not yet. Here.
Ooh.
Drop the mic.
Representative Casello.
Here.
Representative Edmonds.
Here.
Representative Gossett Seidman.
Present.
Representative Roth.
Here.
Representative Silvers.
Here.
Representative Skidmore.
Here.
Representative Snyder's excused. Representative Waldron.
Here.
Now I'm sure we have a quorum.
Thank you so much, Vicki. Welcome to the first Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation meeting for the upcoming 2024 session. It's nice to see so many people here with us and such a great turnout for our delegation. Thank you to the Lagerhead Marine Life Center and the town of Juno Beach for hosting the meeting today. And we can start with Mayor Alexander Cook from the town of Juno Beach.
Good morning, and thank you all for coming. We really appreciate you hosting the first event in Juno Beach here. My apologies, my knee is a mess right now. That's why I'm limping around. I know Ms. Howell has a similar experience. Mine's not quite as bad, but, you know. In any case, we really appreciate all of your support and all of your work for Juno Beach. Mr. Caruso has been fantastic, and we really appreciate all that he has done for us. And we really thank all of you coming here. So on behalf of Juno Beach, I thank you so much from the bottom of my heart, and thank you for really working for all of our benefits. Thank you.
Thank you for having us. We appreciate it. Next, we'll hear from Andy DeHart, CEO of the Lagerhead Marine Life Center.
Hi, I'm not Andy, I'm Karen Marcus. I am on the board here at Lagerhead, and we just wanted to welcome you to our new facility. If anybody would like to do a little tour afterwards, we'll take you around and show you our turtles and our veterinarian and all the great work we do on research. And of course, you've been reading about, this is the highest densely nesting beach in America, and the activity we've had this year has just been our, our staff is exhausted because there are so many nest accounts, so. But welcome you to our new building, and if you ever need anything here, you can call me or Andy, and we're happy to set it up. So thank you for being here in Juno Beach.
Thank you for having us. Now, I would like to recognize elected officials from Palm Beach County. I know of one, so I'm gonna have to ask the rest of you to stand up. My friend, Yvette Drucker, Councilwoman from Boca Raton, came all the way up. Are there any other elected officials? No? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm Jeffrey Manion.
Nice to see you. Thanks for coming. Okay. Welcome, everyone. Well, then we're gonna get to our own member introductions. I can start, and everyone should please introduce their staffs, because what happens is after we do that, we say, oh, wait, I forgot my staff. So I am Senator Tina Polsky. It has been my honor to be the chairwoman for the last year and looking forward to turning over the gavel as our next order of business. I represent District 30, which for Palm Beach County is only the southern part of Boca Raton, and the rest is Northwest Broward, so I'm very lucky to represent two great counties. And this is my, starting my sixth term in the legislature, and excited to continue doing the good, important work. I have with me Shayna Cohen, who is very new to our staff. Shayna, please stand. Thank you. Robert and Karyana are my other aides who are not here today. So thank you. We're excited to welcome Shayna. She will be in Tallahassee with us, and I will pass it down the line to Vice Chair Howell.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I am State Senator Gail Harrell. I represent District 31, which includes the southern part of St. Lucie County, all of Martin County, and the northern part of Palm Beach County down to Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard, out west to Military Trail, then south to North Lake, out further west to the Turnpike, then south again, kind of a stair step down to Southern Boulevard, and all the way out to the Glades. And it's a delight to represent this wonderful section of Palm Beach County. And I have with me today two of my aides, Karen Sweeney, who handles mostly our policy, and Carrie Lyra, who handles our budget issues. So if you have issues on either of those things, if you have proposals for legislation or you have budget requests, you'll know who to contact. But we are here today, and I appreciate each and every one of you coming. This is wonderful to see such a great turnout. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Kelly Skidmore. I represent State House District 92, which is western portions of Boca Raton, Delray Beach, and Boynton Beach. With me today is my legislative aide, Dr. Gwen Gonzalez, and my district aide, Amy Chamberlain. Thank you.
Good, good morning. I'm Lori Berman, the state senator from District 26. I have 10 cities in my district: Boca, Delray, Boynton Beach, Gulfstream, Ocean Ridge, Highland Beach, the Village of Gulf, Wellington, South Bay, and Belle Glade, so it's a pretty large geographic district. And with me today are my legislative assistants Evelyn Duplessis and Sophia Kabej.
Good morning, everyone. I'm State Representative Mike Caruso, District 87, which runs from Annapolis up to Jupiter, works its way on the northern end to, out to the Turnpike. So, and we are sitting right here in the middle of my district, which, you're welcome. What a great place. Lagerhead Marine Center is just a phenomenal facility, and I'm proud to have, proud for, proud to represent it in the, in the State House of Representatives. I'm here today with my, my staff, Walter Boikis, my legislative aide. He makes all the magic happen, along with Eva Sazanova, my district aide. And our offices are in downtown West Palm Beach. I think it's 120 South Olive Avenue and Suite 301. So if you, if you need me, my phone number's 561-702-9319. Really. Okay, 561-702-9319. You're up.
All that information. Thank you for that. I'm State Representative David Silvers. I represent House District 89. The district is in central Palm Beach County, runs from West Palm down to Lantana. I'm here today with my district aide, Audrey Pietra, if you want to stand up for applause. And Kristy Fernley. Kristy, where are you? Couldn't have, oh, there you are, right up front, running the clock. Thanks, Kristy. It's an honor to be here, it's an honor to be here with this, this day, and this is my seventh, this will be my eighth session, and every year it keeps getting better. Great being here. Thank you.
Let's start with Rep. Casello.
Thank you, Senator. My name is Joe Casello. I represent District 90, which encompasses the great cities of Boynton Beach and Delray Beach. My area probably overlaps a little bit with Representative Skidmore's and Senator Berman's. I'm up there on my sixth session, going up on my sixth session, and it's a, it's a pleasure to be here. I'd like to introduce my aides up there. My district aide here is Brian Bees. And my legislative aide, policyholder there, is Troy Grass. And just, you know, we introduce these people, but the work that they do for us to get to where we need to be is phenomenal. Really. They, they get us where we need to be when we gotta file bills and appropriations and all that. These are the people that make the office work. So I think all the aides are out there today, and we appreciate your hard work. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Representative Rick Roth. A little bit of, of history. This used to be my district, barely. My district used to start at Donald Ross Road in the beach and go all the way out to 20 Mile Bend where Arden is. That was District 85 for six years, and I was one of many representatives and senators that got appropriations for the Lagerhead. This is an unbelievable, beautifully center. This is now, this has been for some time considered a world-class operation, but I think they're really hitting their stride now. This is absolutely beautiful facility, but it's not in my district anymore. The legislature did me a favor. My district is easy to explain. I'm from the Martin County line to Southern Boulevard, west of the Turnpike, all the way out to Belle Glade, Pahokee, and South Bay. I have the largest district, District 94. I have Will Punsold as my district aide. Terry Mitzi is also my district aide in Belle Glade. I have two because my district is so big. But I do tell people, part of the reason my district is so big, I have a lot of farmland, and cows don't vote. So I, this is a little bit of a problem, but welcome to the Lagerhead. This is a beautiful facility, and it's really a privilege to be here. Thank you.
It sounds like you missed this district a little bit, but. My name is Gervonta Edmonds, and I'm proud to serve District 88. District 88 covers Riviera Beach, Lake Park, Mangonia Park, Royal Palm Beach, and West Palm Beach. Here with me is my legislative assistant, Ms. Lita Tanya Cruz. This will be my second session, and I'm proud to serve the people of Palm Beach County. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Peggy Gossett Seidman, District 91. I actually used to live up here in Jupiter when I worked for Burt Reynolds and used to walk this very beach, so it's nice to be back. I serve all of the city of Boca Raton and what some people call Boca Raton, but it's West Boca Raton, but it's actually Palm Beach County, and the town of Highland Beach. It's around 110,000 to 115,000 people. I'm sure we're getting dribs and drabs every day of, of new families moving in. I see moving trucks every week. It is an honor to serve the people. This will be my second session. My goals are water preservation and many other things that we've got to work together to preserve in our great county. My aides are, my, my main spot is open. My aide went to work for the speaker-designate of the House, Danny Perez. And I've got a wonderful district aide, Diana Campus, and filling in is my son, Austin Seidman, a poli sci major, and my personal sidekick, because it takes a team. So I appreciate everyone, and thank you for having me, Juno Beach.
Last but not least, my name's Kathryn Waldron. I'm in District 93, which is Wellington, Western Lake Worth, and part of Green Acres. And I used to live up here too for a few years. It's a beautiful area. I've been to this place before. I actually went and bought a lot of turtle gifts for my granddaughter last Christmas, so she knows all about turtles now. Anyway, I want to introduce my district aide, Rozelle Gibbs. She's been with me now since almost the beginning, and I, my former LA went on to law school. So he wasn't put off by all the, I guess, politics and legal stuff. So he went to law school, and I have a new incoming LA that will be announced probably at the end of this week. So thanks. Great to be here.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I wanted to also, on behalf of Senator Powell, we have Diane Andre in the audience. Diane, is Diane, how are you? And then we have Sarah Crowen from Rep. Snyder's office. Over here, hi, Sarah. Okay. Well, let's get on with the important business of electing our new delegation chair and vice According to the delegation's bylaws, the office of chair shall alternate yearly between a Democratic and Republican member, and the election shall be by roll call with the majority of members present and voting. With a quorum being present, I would like to open the floor for nominations to the office of chair of the Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation.
Chairman.
Yes.
Representative Roth, could I make a motion?
Yes, you may.
I'd like to, I'd like to nominate Senator Gail Harrell. I'd also like to make a few comments. I hope you don't mind.
Well, I do, but okay.
The, the good news is, we're talking about a state senator who has done a lot of great bipartisan issues over her many years. I'm gonna make a bad joke, in these crazy times when women are having to have men participate in women's sports and the women's...
Okay, Representative Roth, I'm gonna stop you right there. We are very happy to have Senator Howl. I personally will second her nomination.
Bottom line is, she did health care.
We want all the people to be able to have time to speak here today, so I'm going to use my last vestiges of power and say, I second the nomination of Senator Howell. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Hearing none, I will close the nomination process. A yes vote is in favor of the nomination of Senator Howell to chair, and no vote will be in opposition. Vicki, please call the roll for recorded vote.
Senator Berman.
Yes.
Senator Polsky.
Yes.
Senator Powell's excused. Representative Caruso.
Yes.
Representative Casello.
Yes.
Representative Edmonds.
Yes.
Representative Gossett Seidman.
Yes.
Representative Roth.
Yes.
Representative Silvers.
Yes.
Representative Skidmore.
Yes.
Representative Waldron.
Yes.
Senator Harrell.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay, so for the unanimous vote, congratulations, Senator Harrell, as the new chair of the Palm Beach County delegation. At this point, I will open the floor for nominations to the office of vice chair of the Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, the individual I want to nominate is one of the hardest-working representatives in the, in the Florida House, and he's bipartisan, a firefighter, and a great warrior for his district. I'd like to rep, to nominate Representative Joe Casello as vice chair.
Excellent. Second?
Second.
Second, okay, we hear a second. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Hearing none, I will close the nomination process. Yes is in favor of Representative Casello as vice chair, and no will be in opposition. Vicki, please call the roll.
Senator Berman.
Yes.
Senator Harrell.
Yes.
Senator Polsky.
Yes.
Representative Caruso.
Yes.
Representative Casello.
Yes.
Representative Edmonds.
Yes.
Representative Gossett Seidman.
Yes.
Representative Roth.
Yes.
Representative Silvers.
Yes.
Representative Skidmore.
Yes.
Representative Snyder, Representative Waldron.
Yes.
Having received the unanimous votes by the members present, Representative Joe Casello is, has been elected vice chair of the Palm Beach County delegation. Well, there you go. Just a regular person now. At this time, it is my pleasure to turn the gavel over to the new chair, Gail Harrell, to preside over the remainder of our delegation hearing.
Thank you very much. I so appreciate it. And first, I want to say thank you, Senator Polsky, for everything you have done this last year as delegation chair. Y'all don't know that there's a lot of work involved in delegation meetings, and thank God we have Vicki to help us, but we so appreciate your openness to listen to us and also your participation in, in all the meetings and everything you've done to kind of keep us on track, keep us on time, which I'm all about, and making sure that we hear from the public. And I'd just like to ask you to make a few closing comments, and, and we so appreciate you.
Well, thank you so much, Senator Harrell, Chair. It's been an honor and a pleasure. Working very closely with Vicki Nolan has been great, collaborating on locations and events and different things that we've done. We had an enormous number of events since we've been back from legislative session, and she and Janaya put a ton of work into that, and I thank them so much, and they've been really enlightening and really highlighted the breadth and depth of Palm Beach County and all that it has to offer. So if folks in the audience have ideas about things that we can do, usually it's after session, which will end earlier. Next year, we'll be back, hopefully, in early March, then please reach out to Vicki because it's great for us to go out and see different parts of Palm Beach County. So I am proudly handing over the gavel to you. You have a ton of experience. I know you'll do a great job, and, you know, to me, the most important thing was moving us along, that we don't talk too much, so we hear from the public, because we have limited time. And so to me, that was always the important goal, and so I, I'm sure that that will continue in the strong hands of Chair Harrell. So thank you so much for this honor.
Thank you very, very much. We will miss you as chair, and as we move forward, I just want to say that our doors are always open. We are your representatives in Tallahassee. We are a delegation from Palm Beach County, and we are united in really promoting the needs and concerns of the people of Palm Beach County. So as you have budget requests, if you have legislative issues, if you have concerns, please come and talk to us. We may not always agree, but we will always listen, and we will be there to hear you, and we work together. That's the one thing I have to say that is just so impressive about this delegation. And I sit on three delegations. So to work together with such a large group and have wonderful staff that backs us up and helps us hear you. So please, let us, let us hear from you. Our doors are open. You have concerns, you have budget issues. Let us know. And we're getting into the session, we're, we have committee weeks. The House will be in, in committee week next week. The Senate does not start until October. Budget bills have to be filed. What's the date in, in the House? Budget bills? Representative Caruso, what's the date for budget bills?
Budget, October 16.
Okay, so you have a little, limited time. Senators do not have a date, but make sure you get your budget items in by that timeframe to your House member. As we, as I said, Senate members are a little bit more flexible, and we don't have a dead, hard deadline like that. But let us hear from you, and we are here to represent you. We'll be at various delegation meetings over this next two months, listening to you. So sign up. If you're not on the, open to the public, let us know ahead of time, and we can put you right on the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I could, a moment. I recommend anybody requesting appropriations to not turn them in on October 16th. Turn them in earlier so we can review them, make sure they're in line with, with, you know, the proper, they're, they're done properly and completely, and, and we can, you know, get them in early. September 30th is, is a good time.
Thank you. Very good reminder. Very good reminder. And now let's move along with our business. Let's, number three, approval of the minutes. Are there any additions, edits, or deletions for the minutes of November 18th, December 7th, or January 12th, 2023, or January 30th? Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of all these different meetings?
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The minutes are approved. Fourth order of business, our Criminal Justice Commission. Part of our responsibility is to have a member on the Criminal Justice Committee, and pursuant to the Palm Beach County ordinance 88-16, Section 2.21a, 11, legalese, the Palm Beach County delegation is responsible for appointing a delegation member to the public sector membership to serve on the Criminal Justice Commission. And Kathryn, Representative Kathryn Waldron has expressed an interest, I want to confirm that, to be appointed to the Criminal Justice Committee. Are you willing to serve?
Be happy to.
Yes, good for you. This will, this appointment is as long as the delegation members wish to serve, so hopefully you will stay there quite some time. And the, it's a very important meeting, because we want to make sure that we have a voice on that commission. And then it, the meetings are held the second Monday of each month, excluding holidays, at 8:00 a.m. at the Palm Beach Governmental Center. And if anybody's interested in attending that, we can get you additional information on it. All those in favor of appointing Representative Kathryn Waldron as the delegation appointee to the Criminal Justice Commission for two-year terms, say aye.
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 All those opposed? So ordered. You are hereby appointed. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Representative Casello, do you have something?
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to thank the former member of that committee, Representative Kelly Skidmore. She did a great job, dedication, and you talk about one of the hardest-working representatives. It's a pleasure to work with her up there in the House floor. She's a, she might be small in stature, but she's a regular bulldog up there when it comes to legislation, so I thank you for your service, Representative.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your service, and we look forward to hearing all the news coming out of the commission from Representative Waldron. Next, we'll move on to number four announcements. We do have a message from Sheriff Rick Bradshaw.
You'll have to read it.
Oh, he is not here. Okay, we will read this to you then. As always, thank you for inviting me to speak to the Palm Beach County delegation. Regrettably, I am unable to join you for the meeting today. However, I would like to extend to you and the members of the legislative delegation my best wishes for a successful and safe 2024 session. Sincerely, Senator Rick Bradshaw.
Chair.
Bradshaw. Yes. Do we have any other public announcements? Seeing no further public announcements, if, now, if anybody would like to be part, we have a, various presenters who have signed up earlier. If you have not signed up and you do wish to speak, we do have the ability for you to sign up to do that and become part of after people speak. Okay, fill out the speaker form, and we will make sure you, you have that is, and provide it to Kristy. Where's Kristy? Kristy, right over here.
The forms are out the door, on the table, if you want to fill it out.
If anybody wants to. Okay, we will have local bills. Local bills are voted on by the delegation and then are heard, they must be approved by the delegation in order to be heard in the House, and then eventually they will be voted on in the Senate. But local bills are very important, and we have a local bill hearing to be held on Wednesday, November 1st, at the City of Green Acres Community Center in Green Acres. And the deadline, very important, the deadline for submission to the delegation office of all local bills is Monday, October 2nd at noon. So if you have a local bill that you would like to have the delegation consider, this is for delegation members as well as for any member of the public in a city or county who has an issue that would be a local bill, please make sure that you contact Vicki Nolan and make sure we get it to the delegation office by that deadline. We are under very strict deadlines, and we have no ability to, to bypass those deadlines. Additional announcements, relays of today, replays of today's meeting will be shown Friday, September 15th, immediately following the 1:00 p.m. meeting, the 1:00 p.m. relay of the September 12th Board Accounting Commission's meeting. So if you want to see this, you want to see yourself on TV, if you're going to speak, you can watch it then. And then there'll also be on September 17th, immediately following the 8:30 a.m. replay of the September 12th Board Accounting Commission's meetings on W, WBC TV, and also on Comcast Channel 20. Channel 99, and it was streamed, will be, and be streamed 24/7 on the county's website. So if you want a replay, you want to know what's going on, if you want further details, you can always get the replay. All righty, now, we're moving on to our presenters, and we have a list here of 11. And as I said, if you want to sign up and be heard also, please do so now. And I'm going to just give a little bit of a timeframe. We will be clocking you, and we would like you to speak three minutes. If you can hold it to less than that, better, but we'll give you a signal at three minutes. And please, try and stay on time and have courtesy for those who will follow you. We want to make sure everybody gets heard. All righty. And we will start with, let me see, we have Crystal Jewels, scholarship parent, step-up for students. Oh, and there's a timer down there. Good morning.
Good morning.
And you are recognized. Happy to have you.
Thank you for having me. Good day. My name is Crystal Jewels, and I live in West Palm Beach. And Rep. Edmonds in Senate... Palm Beach, in Rep. Edmonds, in Senate Harrell District. I'd like to thank members of the delegation for supporting HB1 last session, which extended education program for all Floridians. I know from my experience what having a choose, choose, choice scholarship can mean to a family. I came to this country from Haiti when I was four, because my family wanted a better life for their children. I wanted the same for my children. So four years ago, when I was not satisfied with the academic program, my daughter Samaya was making, I started looking for alternative. The Florida Empowerment Scholarship for Educational Options provide me with the ability to find a private school for her. That turned out to be Sacred Heart School in Lake Worth. I was impressed by its enthusiasm on security and the fact it shares my values. Sacred Heart has a nurturing environment that not only has brought me a sense of peace, but has also set clear academic standards for my daughter to succeed. Samaya's academic journey has shifted from struggling to aiming for principal honor roll. Samaya loves Sacred Heart so much, she says she never wants to go anywhere else. I work at a nursing home and studying to become a nurse. As a single mother raising four children, I would not be able to afford Sacred Heart without the help of the Florida Empowerment Scholarship. I recognize having privilege, Samaya is to receive education within a private school setting, a blessing not affordable to many. That's why I can't wait until my youngest is able to attend Sacred Heart on a scholarship. Now with HB1, more families have, more families will have more options to find the best fit for their children, individual needs, just as mine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And you were right on target. Members, do you have any comments or questions for her? Seeing none, thank you very much, and good luck to your wonderful, wonderful children. Next, we'll hear from Christine Berger, a volunteer advocate for Alzheimer's Association. Good morning.
Distinguished members of the Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation, I appreciate the opportunity to address you today. My name is Christine Berger, and I am one of the many faces of Alzheimer's here in Florida. As a former caregiver for my stepfather, Joe, I'm proud to be an advocate and a voice for him and all those who cannot advocate for themselves. Our state resides at the epicenter of the crisis, with the second highest number of individuals living with Alzheimer's in the country. In a recent Rush University study, six out of 67 counties here in Florida were ranked in the top 100 in the country for Alzheimer's prevalence, including Palm Beach County. Just over 580,000 Floridians are living with Alzheimer's disease, including an estimated 53,000 here in Palm Beach County. This equates to over 13.8% of the county's population. I know many of you have been touched by the realities of Alzheimer's and dementia. I am proud to advocate alongside of Alzheimer's for resources and care for those individuals, families, and caregivers impacted by this disease. With your support, we relentlessly remain optimistic as we propose our 2024 priorities. First, recently, the FDA gave full approval to the first treatment that can slow the progression of Alzheimer's, but can be used for only those in the early stages of Alzheimer's or with mild cognitive impairment, MCI. In his late 70s, we noticed subtle changes in my stepdad, but attributed them to old age. It wasn't until he became disoriented while driving and turned into oncoming traffic, he seriously injured my mom. He was finally diagnosed with Lewy body dementia. It is imperative. We educate our community about the early warning signs of Alzheimer's and the importance of brain health. We need to raise awareness of what to look for and when to go to a doctor to discuss screening. We are advocating for a public health campaign that utilizes multiple media platforms and focuses on those from underserved communities. Second, the legislature recently created a Persons with Disabilities Registry for use by law enforcement. This was a first great step, and we want to ensure that law enforcement has the resources they need to understand how best to work with individuals living with Alzheimer's and other dementia. Throughout their journey, six out of 10 individuals with dementia will wander at least once. That is why we are advocating for dementia training to be available for law enforcement as a complement to last year's legislation. Finally, we ask the legislature to continue supporting the funding of programs that have a proven track record in research, care, and services for those in need. This includes the Alzheimer's Brain Bus, the Ed and Ethel Morris Alzheimer's Disease Research Program, and RESPIT through the Alzheimer's Disease Initiative, and community care for the elderly through the Department of Elder Affairs.
And if we could ask you to wrap up as quickly as possible, please.
On behalf of the Alzheimer's Association, we thank you for your opportunity, and we will see you in Tallahassee on February 13th and 14th for our advocacy days. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I can tell you, I appreciate everything you are doing. This delegation has been very supportive of putting additional resources into Alzheimer's research. This year, we gave each one of our 10 member care centers in the state of Florida additional $500,000 for early identification, and that is absolutely key. Of course, we have Alzheimer's Community Care in Palm Beach County and across the Treasure Coast, which provides daycare services for those suffering with Alzheimer's and dementia-related illnesses. So we are there for you, and the state of Florida is committed to making this the most friendly state for all our seniors, and especially for those, and the caregivers as well.
Yes.
And those are key. So thank you for what you're doing.
And thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Rena Taylor, supervising attorney for the Legal Aid Society of Palm Beach.
Good morning. I supervise the Public Guardianship Program of the Legal Aid Society of Palm Beach County. We are appointed by the court to serve as a legal guardian for incapacitated persons residing in Palm Beach, Martin, St. Lucie, and Okeechobee Counties. These vulnerable individuals are unable to make their own decisions and have literally no one else to assist them. They may suffer from dementia, Alzheimer's disease, developmental disability, chronic mental illness, or other condition. There are 16 offices of public guardians throughout the state of Florida, and we have formed a coalition to address our mutual concerns. I'm here to ask your support for two issues. The first is to address the statewide waiting list for our services, so that vulnerable persons no longer need to wait without a decision maker. We are hopeful that this issue will be included in a legislative budget request by the Department of Elder Affairs. The second issue concerns a growing need for long-term placement for very difficult-to-place wards. Many times, the public guardians are asked to take responsibility for individuals who have severe and chronic mental illness and behavioral problems that make it very difficult to find a suitable facility or residence that can meet their needs. These individuals cannot live on their own and require constant supervision to keep them stable and not to be at risk to themselves or to others. And they do not have sufficient resources to afford the extra care that they require. They are not appropriate for typical nursing homes and assisted living facilities, because they pose a risk to the other residents there. They are the state's wards, and many times, they end up homeless, on the streets, in jail, in hospitals, and so forth. We are in the beginning stages of trying to brainstorm ideas to serve this population. We have started a conversation with the Association of Managing Entities to try to come up with ideas. We have been in contact with the Florida Assisted Living Association, who are experiencing similar issues. We are not sure if a solution will require a policy change, or an appropriation, or a combination of both, but we are still in the beginning stages of addressing this issue. We have scheduled a symposium in November in Tallahassee to meet with these other agencies to try to come up with options. I have a handout, which I provided, which more fully addresses the legislative priorities that I have addressed, and I would welcome the opportunity to meet with any of you one-on-one to discuss these priorities further. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate your, what you are doing. And I know we do have some questions, but I do want to comment that I'm pleased to have met with you, and that we're very interested in what comes out of that symposium. And I would, I'm happy to work with you as you go forward. And please, if there are specific items, I know you're working with the department, but we need to really have those requests in as soon as possible, especially if you're looking at legislation that, you know, we do have filing, we do have deadlines to get things into bill drafting. And I know, Senator Berman, you have a question, or a comment?
Yes. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. And I do love that you guys are starting the discussion about the difficult-to-place wards, but I have a question about the waitlist for the state wards. Do you know how many people are on that waitlist right now?
I believe there's approximately 225 people on that waitlist.
And have you been in, thank you. And have you been in contact with, you said the Department of Elder Affairs should include that in the budget?
Yes, they are working on it. And I believe we should hear very shortly.
Okay, I'm happy to work with you and follow up on that.
Thank you so much.
If you have any issues. Thank you.
For your support, thank you.
Yes, Representative Roth, you had a question or comment?
Yes. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Taylor. I also would like to follow up with you and talk a little bit more about this. Little-known fact, my wife, Jeannie, took on a second career the same time I got elected. She was a guardian for her aunt. And unfortunately, she became the guardian because she did not have any living children, and one of her family members was trying to take advantage of her financially. So my wife actually went to Ohio and kidnapped her aunt. I'm being figuratively here, and brought her back to Florida and became her guardian to protect her. And so this is a huge issue. Lot of people, dementia, you know, all kinds of issues are being taken advantage of by their own family members.
Absolutely. We see that every day. I know exactly what you're talking about. Very fortunate to have your wife to be able to do that. Thank you.
And I think as, as the symposium takes place, you know, certainly, one of the issues is the placement of individuals coming out of our mental health hospitals.
Yes.
And they're, they may not be appropriate for a mental health hospital, but then they wind up in our criminal justice system, or they wind up on the street, and then we have huge issues. So this is something that needs a very broad discussion. And I'm glad that you all are holding the symposium, and I certainly look forward to hearing new ideas that come out of that. And I know the whole community would be interested in knowing that as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Marcia Schepler, from Justice for JoJo.
Thank you, legislative members, for allowing me to speak today. My name is Marcy Schepler, and I am JoJo's mom. On September 6, 2019, I took JoJo to a local ER in tradition. JoJo had Down Syndrome, autism, wasn't able to speak, and had the mental age of a toddler. He was feverish, gagging, choking, and had uncontrolled muscle movements. He was in obvious distress. And although I begged for help, JoJo was refused treatment. I asked the charge nurse if he would allow JoJo to die before he treated him, and he answered yes. Immediately, I took JoJo to a different hospital, and he was found to be in septic shock. My JoJo passed away at the age of 29. Medicare conducted an internal investigation and found against the hospital, sanctioning them with the highest and most severe sanction of imminent jeopardy. The next devastating blow is when we learned that the current laws in Florida do not protect those who have intellectual and developmental disabilities, but rather, the hospitals. The current law says, people who are over 24 years old, not married, and do not have minor children, cannot pursue for medical damages except for the most menial amount, about the cost of a coffin. This is the free-kill law. Florida's medical malpractice law represents a complete disconnect from the reality of parents and families with special needs adult children. JoJo was adjudicated by a Florida judge in the Guardian Advocate laws to be unable to marry, unable to engage in complex relationships and have children. He was also unable to have any employment of any kind, but his value, like that of all mankind, is worth more than a dollar. JoJo's worth to our family was beyond measure. Parents of adult children with developmental disabilities do not celebrate milestones like voting rights, or financial freedom, or grandchildren. We celebrate toilet training, completing simple chores, and having good days. Most of all, we celebrate the love these individuals have to offer. The current medical malpractice law, the free-kill law, is pure discrimination. It violates the American Disabilities Act. Since JoJo died, I've been trying to gain support for an amendment to the free-kill law that provide protection with, for people with cognitive disabilities. I thought the law would make perfect sense, a shoo-in. Now, four years later, I can only believe that many may not understand what individuals I am trying to protect. Today, I have some friends with me. These are the people who are most vulnerable adults who need your help. Look who stands with them. It's their parents. It doesn't matter how old they are. Their children are loved and cherished and protected for their whole lives. Now they look to you to add to that protection. The free-kill law is horrible for everyone. I am a free-kill, and I am not anti-healthcare. I am a nurse now. But it's more unfair to the Florida special needs population who never have a chance at meeting the criteria. My JoJo can no longer be protected. But I urge you to support an amendment to the current law to protect those adult children with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for all your friends for coming. We appreciate that.
Madam Chair?
Yes, you're recognized. Representative Casello.
Ma'am, would you get together with my legislative aide, Troy, up there, and give me your contact information?
I absolutely will.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're happy to ski.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from John Wash, supervising attorney for the Legal Aid Society of Palm Beach. And I also do want to announce that we did have the date incorrect for the appropriations deadline in the House. I've been informed that it is November 14th, not October 14th. So you get an extra month to get your appropriations requests in. Aren't you lucky?
My apologies, Chair.
No problem, no problem.
Staff fired.
Actually, better, better to have it an extra month than a month, month earlier, right?
That's right.
Alrighty, next, John. You're recognized. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, yes. I am one of the supervising attorneys of the Children's Law Project at the Legal Aid Society. I'm also the president of the newly-formed Florida Children's Rights Coalition, which is a coalition that, who has a mission of informing and educating about the importance of quality, independent legal representation for kids in our child welfare system. That coalition is new. Legal aid is not new to child welfare. We've been representing children in the child welfare system for over 30 years in Palm Beach County. We are a well-respected member of our child welfare community. Our children's projects have been nationally studied and nationally recognized. The United States Congress has recognized us for our work in getting kids out of foster care more quickly. In 2021, we were named the most outstanding children's law office in the nation, and the University of Chicago has studied this office, and it is the first office in the country proven to get kids out of foster care more quickly through its legal representation of children. That study was cited by the federal government when they decided to release federal 40 dollars to states for providing quality, independent legal representation to foster kids. Unfortunately, last year, a bill was introduced that would have ended our work. It would have shuttered our office, and it would have deprived the 700 to 750 children that we represent at any given time of their attorneys. And these are attorneys who know these children, who provide them with counsel, and advice, and representation during the most critical and crucial legal case they will ever face in their entire lives. HB 875 would have removed the judge's longstanding discretion to appoint an attorney for a dependent child when the judge felt it was time to do so, and it would have replaced that discretion with a very troublesome competency standard. with a very troublesome competency standard. In Legal Aid's children's projects, Palm Beach has a national model of how to represent foster children. The data I have provided you speaks for itself, but that data is not just numbers. Those numbers represent thousands of children who are waking up in our county every morning, safer and healthier because they were represented by us when they were in foster care. All we're asking for, this does not cost the state anything, all we're asking for is for you to help protect what we're able to do, let us, let us be able to continue to serve the people of Palm Beach County if this bill comes up again in the next session. We look forward to meeting with all of you individually on this issue sometime, hopefully before session starts. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Please call the different offices and make appointments. Any questions? Ah, and you beat the three minutes. Next, we'll hear from Tammy McDonald, CDO of Move, Move a Co Loop.
Good morning. My name is Carol Jones Gilbert. I'm the very proud executive director of the Palm Beach County Housing Authority. The Palm Beach County Housing Authority was established in 1969. We serve the most vulnerable in the, throughout Palm Beach County. We are one of six housing authorities in the area, but we are the only county-wide housing authority. We have two main programs, our public housing program and our housing choice voucher program. Through that program, we provide $2.8 million a month of rental assistance. We have 3,600 vouchers that serve veterans, people with aging out of foster care, VASH. We have housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, homeless, those at risk of sexual, human trafficking, sexual abuse. And we have 428 public housing units. Today, we stand for you to bring an innovative project to address our affordable housing crisis.
Good morning, I'm Tammy McDonald. I'm the chief development officer for the Palm Beach County Housing Authority. I'd like to first say thank you for Florida Statute 16604151, because that has allowed us to be able to present the project, which is one of innovation, where we are utilizing an industrial site to provide affordable housing. The project is Legacy at 45th Street. It is a 48-unit multifamily rental affordable housing community in West Palm Beach. We will utilize steel shipping containers as a structural frame. They will be delivered to the site 95, 90% complete with all of the finishes, interiors, your HVAC, your electrical plumbing, et cetera. There will be 24 one-bedroom units at 675 square feet, and 24 two-bedroom, two-bath units around 950 square feet. This innovative approach addresses challenges experienced by traditional onsite-built method with speed to market, in that we'll be able to deliver these units in 12 months versus the 24 to 36 months utilizing the traditional methods we've all become used to. And we'll be able to control, control construction costs because of the product, nature of the product. This project will serve households at 80% and below the area median income.
Thanks for the 30 seconds. Rest in peace for success. So Legacy at 45th Street is, is a proof of concept, to show that it can be done. So we want to expand this drastically throughout the county. And what we need is this, we need a favorable funding stack. So Legacy at 45th Street was 40%, 0% interest loans and grants. The city of West Palm Beach provided a grant, and Palm Beach County provided a loan. The loan from Palm Beach County was 5.5 million, and 1.25 million from the city. The second thing we need is, needs to be stable and repeatable. So cost containment is really important. The units themselves, the units themselves are about $125 per square foot all in, that's really important. And then the other is speed to market. We can build in less than 12 months, including the permitting, which takes a long time. Our ask with the delegation is that we need support. And we need a champion, because we're looking for appropriations to be able to expand this drastically throughout Palm Beach County. And, and having that type of funding model will help us get there. And it's 100% affordable, so there's no set aside. Everything is affordable in the, in the units themselves. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to ask the, the two of you who are not on the list, please fill out a speaker form so we have you in our records, okay? I would so appreciate that.
Madam Chair.
We do have some questions, okay, starting with Representative Caruso, followed by Senator Berman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for coming here today and, and all the work you're doing. The project with these containers on 45th Street is amazing. It's nothing like you would imagine. It, it's the, the speed with which they go up and all. How, how big is, I got a couple of questions. How big is your next project? How much money is it going to cost? And what kind of, what kind of money are you looking for from the state? And how much matching there would be against that?
So our next, our next project.
You're recognized.
Sorry, our next project that's up right now is 120 units. It's about a $33 million project, includes some commercial space in it. And our request from the state, from the state appropriations would be about a third of that, $10 million, we think would help us in the funding stack. And then the rest would be with just regular market debt.
Are you eligible? Let me clarify. We just passed $800 million that went into affordable housing. Where does this project fit into the affordable housing bill that we just passed, as did Palm Beach County pass an initiative on affordable housing? This, these dollars are already allocated, and it would be appropriate to use dollars that are already there first.
So we were able to use some funding from the county to assist in keep, in making the, the Legacy at 45th Street property or project affordable. The Palm Beach County does provide RFPs where you, they're very competitive, you have to go, you have to submit a proposal and, you know, be scored accordingly. So there is an opportunity to utilize some of the county funding in that. We are nonprofit. The nonprofit is the special organization, and that is a, an instrumentality of Palm Beach County Housing Authority and its nonprofit arm. So it does allow us to be able to apply for funding that we might not otherwise be able to do. So because, when it comes to affordability, to, when you don't have market rate or the workforce level with a higher area median incomes, you do require more subsidy or more assistance in the way of, of, whether it's a grant, or whether it's appropriations or whatever. And we anticipate that we would apply for funding through other means, but there will still be a shortage. There's always a gap when you're trying to create affordable housing and keep all of the units affordable.
Senator Berman, you had a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You pretty much asked my question. So, but I love what you're doing. I think it's great, and we'll, happy to work with you and work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Roth. Whoop, I missed one. Representative Casello first. We're going down the line.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question. These containers, I come from local government, and I know that a lot of the municipalities, they have an issue with this type of construction. Have you gotten any pushback from where you're trying to put these, or has it been pretty much accepted?
It's been very accepted, and we're, we're pleased to share that it's been accepted. One of the things that, I mean, we provided you with a handout, and when you look at containers in some areas where they've been built, you know, in other countries, in Jacksonville also was the first place in Florida, they have not finished the container, so it looks like a shipping container, and it's very, it's not aesthetically pleasing. Whereas with the product that we're building, we are actually going to stucco, concrete stucco the outside, and it will be very aesthetically pleasing. You won't know that it's a shipping container by looking at it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I missed someone coming down this side. Representative Skidmore, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much for your presentation. I think someone mentioned that the Legacy project is industrial. Is the new project in an industrial area? And if so, what is the commercial aspect of the, the, the project that is adjacent or part of the housing? Is it retail?
The new project will not be in an industrial area.
Okay.
It will be in an area that's currently commercial. And we do intend to have approximately 5,000 square feet of commercial. We've not, at this point, determined the specific use, but we are looking at banking, having a branch there, because it is in an area that is not currently well-served or served at all by a banking institution. So we've already started the discussions with a banking institution.
Thank you. And I think next is Representative Roth.
Thank you, Chair. Asked and answered by Representative Casello, thank you.
Thank you. And now Representative Edmonds.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will tell you, I am very excited about this project. This has potential to be in my district. And right now, the average one-bedroom is like $2,000, so any new type of project is exciting for me. But I do have two questions. I want to know, how do you expect to keep this affordable? And what makes your model, I guess, better than the traditional models that are out there?
It will be affordable because the Housing Authority, our mission is to serve the very, most vulnerable people in our population. We currently, through our program, serve people at 30% of area median income, which is extremely low income. Another exciting thing about this project is we applied for the first youth build grant in the county of Palm Beach, which will allow us to serve youth 16 to 24 that are justice-involved, rural veterans, and teach them a construction trade. They will learn how to build these shipping container apartments. And we see that this will be a project that we will continue for our future projects going on. So we're not only providing affordable housing, but providing opportunities for youth to learn a very lucrative trade. It was a $1.5 million grant, and it will go for three years, and we will continue to apply for that grant for future projects.
And this, the.
Follow-up.
And the follow-up question is, what makes your approach different or better than the traditional approaches that are out there?
Speed to market. I mean, we talked about how we can build these in 12 months or less. Construction, traditional construction, you're looking at two years to three years to get it to market. We will break ground sometime October and November, and these will be ready to occupy next year.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further questions? Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear from Deb Gottlieb, from the General Counsel for the Children's Services Council of Palm Beach. You're recognized.
Good morning. My name is Deborah Gottlieb. I'm the General Counsel and Chief of Legislative Affairs with the Children's Services Council of Palm Beach County. I'm here today to express the Children's Services Council's support of one of our longest-running funded programs. CSC has funded the Legal Aid Society to represent foster children into the dependency system since 1991. We do so because we believe vulnerable children need their own lawyers. Last year, there was a bill, HB 75, that we believe jeopardized the good work that these lawyers have been doing for many, many years. Children in the dependency court are a party to the case, just as are DCF, just as the Garden Ed Lightem, and the parents. Everyone has their own lawyer. And in Palm Beach County, we are unique, because children have their own lawyer. This bill, if it returns next year, will jeopardize that service. The numbers speak for themselves. Legal aid has represented thousands of foster children in Palm Beach County with an average length of stay in out-of-home care for just 12.6 months. While a year and a half may not seem long to an adult, for a three-year-old child, that's more than a third of their life. And for most kids, they don't get, 12.6 is a very low amount of time compared to other parts of the state. What is distinct about the Legal Aid Society is they're able to provide excellent representation due to their level of expertise. They also have support from paralegals and social workers, and most importantly, they have very low caseloads as compared to the other attorneys in the dependency system. This allows the attorney to spend the time it takes to properly represent a child in dependency court while ensuring that the child gets the additional supports they need during their time in care. CSC has funded Legal Aid for so long because the data shows the program works. A number of years ago, CSC arranged for an independent evaluation of the Foster Children's Project. That's the study that Mr. Walz referenced. That study concluded that the, a Legal Aid attorney, a child who was represented by a Legal Aid attorney left foster care and found long-term stability that they deserved at significantly higher rates than children who do not have a Legal Aid attorney. We still see this kind of success today based on recent DCF data. CSC does believe in the value of the Garden Ed Lightem program. While we don't know exactly what a 2024 bill will look like, it's our view, based on last year's analysis, that a proposed bill will limit, limit attorney ed lightem representation to very, very narrow circumstances, subject to a competency test. We support a bill that strengthened the guardian, strengthened the guardian ed lightem program by providing more access and support and eyes on children, but not to the detriment, detriment of foster children in Palm Beach County and a program that has been helping children find permanency and stability in Palm Beach County for years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Kaitlin Carrington, American Cancer Society Action Network. And you're recognized, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, my name is Kaitlin Carrington, and I volunteer, so be easy on me, with the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. It's a nonpartisan, nonprofit affiliate of the American Cancer Society. We work for nearly 150,000 Floridians that are to be diagnosed with cancer this year, and promote policies to reduce the cancer burden and ultimately save lives. Raise a hands of how many people know somebody that has cancer or had cancer themselves.
Oh, wow. Everybody.
Right? So I'm here today to talk about the importance of biomarker testing and ensuring cancer patients receive the right treatment. And I hope that you'll address this issue during the 2024 legislative session. Progress in cancer outcomes involves using precision medicine, which uses information about a person's own genes to diagnose and treat diseases like cancer. Biomarker testing is essential for precision medicine and can lead to improved outcomes and better quality of life for cancer patients. Biomarker testing can also avoid unnecessary treatments as well and lead to more cost-effective care and savings for patients. Ultimately, and unfortunately, insurance coverage for biomarker testing fails to keep pace with this innovation and advancement in treatment, even though biomarker testing is the gold standard of care. This means many cancer patients aren't getting the best access and treatment for their cancer. As state legislators, you have the ability to ensure that state-regulated health plans, including Medicaid, cover appropriate biomarker testing. We were excited to see a bill filed last session, and this year, we want to make sure it crosses the finish line. Florida now should join the 13 other states, including Texas, Georgia, and Arizona, and others that have already passed this meaningful legislation. This year is my 10th year that I'm cancer-free, and I was lucky enough to have insurance that covered, thank you. I was lucky enough that had insurance that covered my surgeries, radiation, and medication that I take every day still. And I really think that all Floridians should be given this right, and it's a human right, and have the ability to have a quality of life and treatment that's fast and effective. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair.
You're recognized.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank, and thank you for fighting the fight and winning. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm sure a lot of people here too have been in the same boat.
Yeah, it's, it's a tough road. I am, with this biomarker technology, treatment, from beginning to completion, success, free of cancer, is that method more expensive than the traditional method that they've done with the general chemo and radiation stuff?
I think that the bottom line is if it's going to be covered by insurance or not. So if it's not covered by insurance and it's a cash payment, then yes, it's going to be more.
Outside of insurance, if I could, Madam Chair?
Your follow-up.
Thank you. Outside of insurance, regardless of insurance, the total cost, if, if one method, the traditional method costs $600,000.
Right.
Does the biomarker method, a treatment system, cost less or more than that?
It's cost-saving, so it would be less. I don't have specifics amount of dollar amounts, but I know that that's the purpose of it, is to have cost savings for insurance companies as well as patients, and identifying the right treatment. So if you're going to identify the right treatment and get that, that's going to save time, money, and expenses across the board.
And be more successful.
And be more successful, right? Which is what we all need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Senator Polsky.
Thank you. Can you tell us who sponsored the bill last year and the number?
Yes.
If they have sponsoring it again?
We got sponsored by Senator Tom Wright and Representative Karen Gonzalez Pittman.
And do you know if they are sponsoring it again?
They'll be continuing to do that this year, yeah.
Okay, good. Wish I knew somebody in health, health committees, Senator Harrell. Wish I knew somebody in health committees, Senator Harrell.
You're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. That was basically the question I was going to ask, like, who filed the bill? And what was the bill number again, I'm sorry?
I don't have the bill number, to be honest.
Okay, great.
I've been volunteering a month, so I'm still, break me in.
Thank you, Chair.
I can get back to you on that, though.
We can look that up, no problem.
We'll look it up. We can get that to you. Anybody else have any further comments? Well, thank you for your advocacy. We so appreciate that. My daughter's now eight years cancer-free.
Wow, congratulations to her. Thank you, thanks again.
Next, we will hear from Kristin Solomon, Director of Operations for statewide Guardian Ed- Litem.
Michelle Kennedy, Circuit Director, Guardian Ed- Litem Office. She had an emergency this morning. First, I would like to thank all of you for all the things that you do for Palm Beach County. You're all wonderful representatives for us. At the statewide Guardian Ed- Litem Office, we represent the legal interest of abused, neglected children in the court and the community. Every child is appointed a statewide Guardian Ed- Litem Office, Guardian Ed- Litem Attorney, a Child Welfare Professional, and hopefully, a volunteer or a pro bono attorney. This is recognized as the representation model is the best practice. Past year, the office have partnered with the legal community to develop and implement a Guardian Ed- Litem Attorney Training Program so that each of our Guardian Ed- Litem Attorneys are well-trained and produce highly qualified Guardian Ed- Litem Attorneys. Our legal representation protects and advances the legal rights of children whose age and other limitations prevent them from making their own decisions. The Florida Guardian Ed- Litem Office considers a child's physical safety and emotional well-being and permanent placement in a stable, nurturing home environment. We provide cellless, independent representation. And our office is the only one on a child's case who provides undivided loyalty to the child. The Florida Guardian Ed- Litem Office appeared in 594 dependency appeals, and we're glad to say that we won 98% of those appeals, so we're excited about that. And on May 31st, 2023, the Child Bureau verified that the statewide Guardian Ed- Litem Office is going to receive a portion of the Title IV e-funding, and that was approved. And we're just waiting for the cap for DCF to be approved, and then we will receive that money. We represent, as of today, 1,600 of Florida's most vulnerable children won't receive representation until that cap is finally approved by the federal government. Recently, the number of children represented in Florida has increased significantly. Our program is now providing representation for 91% of children in Florida. And here in Palm Beach County, there's 1,178 kids that the Guardian Ed- Litem Office is appointed to currently. Thank you again for all your dedication to kids who are in the dependency system.
Thank you, any questions? Thank you very much for what you do. Oh, for those of you who are interested, Senator Wright filed SB 1218 in 2023, and then also Representative Gonzalez-Pitman filed HB 805. So, if you want to look those up, and then you can probably find out if they have already filed the bill again. But I would assume that they're going to file the same bill. Next, we'll hear from Marilyn Jones, a Supported Living Coach from Jones Quality Care. And welcome.
Thanks, good morning. My name is Marilyn Jones, and I'm here with Kim Nobby. And we provide Support Living Coach services to consumers who are under Developmental Disabilities Program through the Agency for Persons with Disabilities and the Community-Based Waiver Program. The reason that we are here today is to tell you that the Support Living Coaches today make 8.4% less than we were making in 2003, which is 20 years ago. Kim and I make less today than we did 20 years ago through the HCBS Waiver Program, which is set by the, the rates are set by the Florida legislator. Of all of the services that are provided through the HCBS Waiver, Supported Living is definitely the most challenging and cost-efficient program. We help these vulnerable developmental disabled adults who live independently in the community, meaning they reside in their own homes, and the families and natural supports are really not there available to assist many of them. Some of them don't have any families anymore, some were adopted, some families have all passed away. But we are there to assist them. We help them finding affordable homes, budgeting their money, managing their money, medical appointments, transportation, assisting them with meal preparation, meal planning, as well as disaster planning. Many of our clients do not have the family or support that they need. So, that's where we, the Support Living Coaches, step into their lives to help them integrate into society to be successful in their lives. And I'm saying this because we help them in every area of their lives, and I mean every area. We are the only waiver service that is required to be available on-call 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And it's supposed to be for emergency only, but many of our clients don't really understand what the emergency contact means only because to them, anything is an emergency. So, they will call you anytime of day or anytime of night. And we are not reimbursed for that, for those hours that we spend. Even if an emergency occurs and we have exhausted the amount of hours that we've been allocated for that month, we would not be reimbursed. However, because of the job, we are required to do there, to be there and be available to them, to assist them with their emergency situation. And right now, we are in the hurricane season, and that means that we are getting them ready for the hurricane with the medical supplies, food, first aid kits, battery, water, cellphone, cellphone chargers, getting them ready for this, before the storm occurs. And we have assisted with evacuating to a safe place during the storm and get them back to their families, or back to their homes after the storm is over. I mean, families, families is like roommates that they share with, okay? It is hard to imagine working as hard as we do and to be able to make less than 8.4% than what we made 20 years ago. So, currently, we are asking and we are requesting a 20% raise from you. And that 20% will, first, it will only give us like 8.4% of what we were making in 2003. And then the other would be for the cost of living raised increases that everyone has gone through except the Support Living Coaching. Thank you so much for your time, and please, we have already provided information about the Support Living Program. It's something that we enjoy doing. However, we cannot continue to go on at the amount of money that we are being reimbursed.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we're going to go into public comment. If you have not done so and do wish to speak, please go out and fill out one of these forms, and they will be brought up to us. Please give it-
To Kristi.
To Kristi, right over here. If you'll give it to Kristi, if you filled one out, and we will take you in the order in which we receive them. Okay, Kristi's right here, if you want to give Kristi one. Okay. Next, we'll hear in public comment section, and please limit your comments, again, to three minutes. I think we can afford three minutes at this point still. Okay, we'll hear from Karen Baker, and her subject is Supported Living Coaches.
Hi, everyone. First, I'd like to thank you all for taking the time out of your busy schedules to listen to what we have to say here today. I know you're very busy. I'm not going to talk to you today about Supported Living Statistics. Marilyn gave you those along with a packet of information. I'm not a Supported Living Coach. I'm a mom of an almost 50-year-old daughter, Jenny, who has developmental disabilities. Jenny has been in Supported Living for about 28 years now. That time, hang on. During that time, there have been many Supported Living Coaches in Jenny's life. These people are angels to Jenny and to her family, as well to all, as all other consumers in Supported Living. We're lucky, Jenny is higher-functioning, and she has natural supports in her life so far. But my husband is 76, and I'll be 71 in two weeks. Let's face it, our days are numbered. There are many people with disabilities whose families are not involved in their lives, either because they've passed away, they're elderly, cannot participate, they don't live close by, or they just don't care. The Supported Living Coaches become their family, their mother, father, brother, sister, friend, confidant, advisor, teacher, sorry, I'm getting emotional, triage nurse, secretary, making their doctor's appointments, hair appointments, and then their transporters to those appointments. They help them with paying their bills and keeping watch to make sure their finances are looked after. Sometimes, they're only, they're the only social interaction a consumer has in their life, taking them to the movies, thanks, dear, shopping, or taking them on vacations such as cruises or to the beach. When something goes wrong at Jenny's house, I'm the first one who gets a call, anytime, day or night, to tell me your cable TV's not working, her toilet's running, or leaking, or a thunderstorm or tornado warning has frightened her. I can still help her out, but for others, their Supported Living Coach is getting those calls 24/7, and not just from one consumer, but depending on their caseload by many others. If a consumer is sick and has to go to the hospital, the Supported Living Coach takes them and sits with them. They are that person's family. If a consumer needs tests such as a colonoscopy, the Supported Living Coach helps with the prep and then takes them for the procedure. As I said, these Supporting Living Coaches are angels in our lives. I know when I can no longer do things for Jenny that she requires, her coach will step in to take over for me. The people who choose to be in Support, to be Supported Living Coaches are obviously not in this for the money. It is a calling. However, they should be able to earn a fair wage in order to keep performing their jobs. If the support coordinators leave because they can't pay their own bills, we will get unqualified people to take their jobs. And if there are no more coaches, the only other option for the consumers in Supported Living is to go to group homes. Please consider raising their pay to a fair and equitable amount. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next, we'll hear from KJ Merkent, Merchant, Merkert. I can't read your writing, sorry.
Hi, my name is KJ McCurt, and I work in Palm Beach County with several grassroots organizations in terms of election integrity. But I'd like to start by saying thank you for all of those who stood up to spoke, to speak this morning. Wow, it's pretty, pretty amazing stories, and thank you for advocating for those who cannot advocate for themselves. So, free, fair, and accurate elections are a cornerstone of any free society. Accurate elections, including accurate voter rolls, are mandated by federal law. Many curious citizens have shown 100 different ways that we do not have either, and Florida, unfortunately, is far from the gold standard. In reference to citizenship, citizenship is required to vote in federal and Florida elections, yet is not being verified, not by our SOE and not by our SOS. Our SOE personally told us the SOS verified citizenship, yet Cordbird is on record saying it's difficult to do and is not being done by the SOS or the Division of Elections. With millions pouring across our southern border, and Florida issuing over 1 million driver's licenses and state IDs to non-citizens in the last year and a half, we need legislation that mandates true citizenship verification of those on the rolls currently and of every new registrant. In reference to voter roll maintenance, Florida has had over 500,000 on the rolls at the end of 2022 with invalid addresses. The largest counties have suspiciously added voters in the same exact pattern over the last seven years despite largely varying population growths. Palm Beach County has nearly 8% of active registered voters who haven't voted in 10-plus years or have never voted at all. None of these issues should exist, and the National Voter Registration Act of 1993 requires accurate rolls for all federal elections. We need legislation that mandates true and accurate voter roll maintenance. In reference to vote-by-mail, the bipartisan Carter-Baker Commission determined vote-by-mail to be rife with fraud. It was expanded due to the pandemic, and the pandemic is over. There's no chain of custody. It relies on subjective and overly lenient signature verification, and ID is not checked. We saw what happened with drop boxes with the documentary, the documentary 2000 Mules. What's the difference between a mailbox and a drop box except that there are 1,000 more mailboxes? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Todd Buffington concerning election legislation.
Thank you to the delegation for your time today. I've been working with KJ and many others here in Palm Beach County and across the state on election integrity issues. And unfortunately, we do not, in our opinion, have integrity in our elections in the state. To follow up to what KJ was talking about with regards to vote-by-mail, we need to limit vote-by-mail to those physically unable to vote in person, and it should be a minimum, at minimum attested to by a sworn affidavit, that they are unable to vote in person. Additional proof of identity should be required, and vote-by-mail ballots should have a serial number that ties them to the voter. It could still be anonymous. Regarding election technology and process, current election systems have been found to be hemorrhaging vulnerabilities. Wireless modems and connections, thumb drives, connections by uncertified systems into the state voter database, and reporting of results by those same systems present major opportunities for malicious acts. Suspicious Wi-Fi connections were found in 15 precincts in St. John's County during the last election, all named "Let the Dog Out." We have been told endlessly that our election systems are not connected to the Internet. They should not be, and we need legislation that guarantees that and that our systems cannot be accessed remotely. We also need legislation that requires true audits of our results with paper ballots prior to election certification. Currently, all audits are performed after election certification, which makes absolutely zero sense. We also need to change Florida Statute 101.5604 to allow counties to not use electronic tabulators should they choose so. We also need the state to conduct true risk assessment audits of our election systems and processes. We have a group of citizens from across Florida which has analyzed current legislation, including changes made by SB 7050, and developed this list of priorities to help ensure free and fair elections going forward. I would like to leave each of you with one of, a copy of this. And in general, we are advocating for transparency, eligibility control, and control of the process within our state elections. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Make sure we get those, yes.
Madam Chair, down here.
I'm going to start.
I have a question, sir.
Yes.
Go back to the microphone, please.
Representative?
When you apply for a voter registration card, when you register to vote, do you, don't you have to provide a social security card to prove your citizenship?
No, there are methods where you can register without any ID whatsoever. There is also an opportunity to register with just your ID or driver's license. So, you do not have to provide a social security number. There are certain cases where you do have to provide both. I believe if you register online, you are asked for both within the Division of Elections. However, there are other ways through third-party registration organizations where you are not asked that information.
Madam Chair, follow-up?
Follow-up.
Thank you. What, then what is the SOE or the Secretary of State doing to make sure that citizens are registering versus just people with driver's licenses?
Well, unfortunately, even having a star on your driver's license does not verify that citizenship was checked. And currently, our SOE believes the Secretary of State is verifying citizenship, and he has himself, as KJ alluded to, admitted that they are not checking, and it's difficult to do so. There are systems in existence, there's the David, there's the SAVE system, which enables people to go out and verify citizenship. There are pretty accurate databases in existence, and we're asking that that be mandated by legislation, that those are used by at least either the state or each SOE.
Thank you.
Representative Casella.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to make a statement, because I don't think this is the forum to have the back and forth, but our governor, current governor, said we had the most secure, best election ever here in the state of Florida. There's been numerous- There's been numerous cases through the country that have been taken to courts to try to prove fraud, which was never proven. So what you say, okay, I understand where you're coming from with this, but the reality is, our elections are solid, they're good, and transparent. Thank you, Chair.
I disagree. I can show you, these are charts of voters being added in four of the largest counties in the state of Florida. You'll notice that the patterns are an exact match, despite these counties having population growth variations between negative 1% and a positive 7.9%. How could you have voters added in this kind of synchronized fashion with varying changes in population? I also have the results, the official SCYTL, S-C-Y-T-L, results from the 2020 election. What is shown in yellow is where these results were set by an algorithm. They matched the percentage from the total votes, copied it over to individual batches of votes, and that is how our results were set in the 2020 election. There are videos online where you can see that. There are many people who have proven this, if you would care to listen to those.
Through the chair. So our governor had it wrong, then? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Representative Roth.
Todd, I'm going to ask you to give me some further information, either now or later. What organization are you a part of? Before I do that, I want to make a comment. I've been working on this election integrity for two years. Roe Grossman, I consider to be an expert in a lot of areas. I think we do need to clean up our voter rolls. The Secretary of State, Cord Byrd, said that was his top priority when he was appointed over a year ago. Given this, the governor's bill, Senate Bill 1718, immigration, and the focus on driver's license, and the idea that you, that it's, it was focused on the fact that states like New York are giving license, driver's license to what they call undocumented workers, meaning, oh, if you don't want to provide documents to get a driver's license, you can still get one, but it has a star on it, or some kind of code. So you, you referenced that in your comments. I think that is one area that we need to go after, is making sure that, because most people are now registering to vote through the Department of Motor Vehicles.
Correct.
And that is also a problem, because a lot of times, they're not, they're not giving wet signatures. They're doing it with a stylus, which sounds crazy to me. So I think the area we need to focus on is trying to tighten up who, how, what method of ID can you use in order to be allowed to vote? It should be a Florida driver's license or a Florida ID number, in my opinion. Right now, you can have a Costco credit card with your picture on it and a Homeowners Association ID and be allowed to vote. That's in the law. We need to change that. So, so my question to you is, what organization are you part of? Because this is going to take some effort to convince the legislature that there's more work to be done.
Agreed. I'm working with a group from Defend Florida, which has members from across the state, many election professionals. They've made themselves professionals on the topic of election.
I would, I would remind you, though, we do, we do have a problem in some cases, and it goes across the board, not just in election integrity, it's everything. We need to remind citizens that are coming to Tallahassee and, and working with their legislators, we want you to come, we beg you to come, but we need more civility. We don't need to be antagonistic towards our supervisors of elections. We don't need to be antagonistic with our legislators, because you don't like what we've done. We need to do more, but we need to do it with a kind and civil tone.
Agreed.
So that's what I'm asking.
Agreed.
I get too many reports from Wendy Link and other people, that there are people that are being very belligerent when they are trying to work with their supervisors. So keep that in mind.
Certainly. We haven't even been able to get a meeting actually with Wendy, but.
Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Melody Harn, in addressing APD Services, and I connect. Good morning.
So glad that you've invited.
Would you move the microphone down, so we can hear you, dear? Thank you.
Okay, in my stature, I am short, but in my advocacy, as a mom, Melody Hearn here, I wear that mother hat. I wear the advocacy hat for the National Down Syndrome Congress Convention Policy and Advocacy member. I also am governor-appointed to serve Family Care Council in Florida Statute 393-502. And in that, we ask for appointments to be given, so if you have any workings with the governor's office and can assist in asking for all of the statewide family care councils, there are 15 of them all across the state, to please appoint members who have been waiting for over four years, because I can't do it all. I ask that these Northeastern and other places around the state can't even vote as board-appointed members, because they don't have members that are appointed yet. So please go to bat for Family Care Council in your legislative session. I also would say that we've been around for 30 years. We are, just celebrated our 30th year in Family Care Council, so look it up in Florida statute. We are part of the 393, which governs our individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. We ask parents, siblings, grandparents to come on board to seek that appointment. We have individuals in our group here today that have been seeking that appointment and have not heard a word for four years. We have individuals, self advocates of themselves that apply to be on that board. I have a board member with me today. Crystal, would you stand up? Crystal is appointed, just like I am, to the Family Care Council.[1623.35][1623.35][applause] We ask that you work with the Agency for Persons with Disability and the new director, Secretary Director of APD, Taylor Hatch, as she met with us after DD Day and promised us that we were going to work with community efforts, but you've got to understand, when you tell somebody to go to the church to get a potluck, which was her words, we need training. You can't, we go to our churches, and sometimes you're asked to remove your individual, because they're making noise. I'm sorry. I love my church, and our church has learned and taken Matthew, my son, in as a member of the church, because he sat through membership, and he bugged the pastor until he gave membership class again. So we've got to work with those who have a voice, and they were here today speaking out for those who don't have a voice. And under Family Care Council, we work with APD and their policies. We work with the iConnect, which has almost been a disaster, if you've in my commitment. It's been years of promises of things that were going to come and then not come, and the waiver support coordinators and others can't access it adequately. Their notes are scrambled. They're not able to check in through the EVV system, because they don't get connected, and then they don't get paid. Would you do a job that you don't get paid for? No, we need correction. I ask you to come to me and seek my advice, and I will see you in Tallahassee. Thank you.
Thank you very much.[1709.15][1709.15][applause] And I do want to thank all the presenters, everyone who came to bring their issues to us. This is very, very important that you come and speak to us. If you want to make further appointments, to have further conversations, please reach out to each one of our offices. We are here to be your representatives in Tallahassee. And seeing no further public comment, Representative Casella.
Thank you, Chair. Just in closing here, I would just like to say thank you to our Senator Tina Polsky for being the chair the past year. She did a great job. She's, she's a joy to be around, right to the point she gets, and that's very refreshing in this business. And also, the new chair, Senator Harold, I look forward to working with you. I know we've worked many bills together up there, across the line, nonpartisan. You are one of the nicest people to work with, knowledgeable, and I look forward to coming in, not only working here as your vice chair, but up here in Tallahassee and working with you there in helping all Floridians. So thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment by members before we adjourn? Seeing no further comment and no further business to come before the delegation, we, I recognized, let me see, Senators, Representative Skidmore moves we rise. We are adjourned.